YouTube, is that still okay?
Yes, it is still okay.
Okay, thank you, just making sure.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. Like Annie said, we have a lot of close friends and family from the island in Lahaina. One of my good friends is one of the firefighters there that lost his house. So this one hurts. I just hope it's a good eye-opening. We're not out there telling people, "Don't park in the red and do your brush clearance for it," because we want to. We're out there to try and protect you guys. We need the best defensible space possible, but in an event like that, there's nothing anyone could do. They lost water, they lost engines, they had firefighters hurt. They completely understaffed. And with winds like that, there's not much you could do. So we went out today and people are going to start getting the letters to complete the brush clearance, within the, given them two weeks to 30 days, depending on how it is. We're going to continue doing more inspections, even though it's late in the year. But now this fire season's coming, we're going to really beef up on that. Any questions?
No.
One, LA County Fire is going to... And they've already been in talks with the Island Company, Conservancy, Vons, and one other, the Express. So they're going to give out paperwork. So in the event of a fire, all the paperwork's already done. So we're able to call the Express and, "Hey, can we have boats?" "Hey, Island Company, can we get some buses?" "Conservancy, can we use this?" And then what vendors in town. So for that day, on the 13th, restaurants, businesses, hotels could come up and pre-do paperwork to be on the list, to be able to help when, if and when we get a fire. But everything will be filled out already.
That's great.
So a press release will be coming out soon on that.
That's what date again, Mikey, sorry?
What's that?
What's the date again?
September 13th.
Thank you.
And it'll be here in the chambers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and City Staff. In the last two weeks, we had 119 observations by the deputies. We had 67 calls for service, resulting in two direct public arrests, one for burglary, one for grand theft, and one for felony domestic violence. Last week, we had the Rodden Hill giveaway with Ron Hanson. There were no leftovers, no kids didn't get it. It was fantastic, worked out like, numbers were perfect, so we just got lucky. August 1st, we had the National Night Out. It turned out really well. It was an outstanding event. We had lots of people from the public and a lot of visitors visit us. And it turned out really well. I'd like to announce on August 29th that we're having a retirement party for Deputy Dean Austin, retired a few months back from the station, from the department. She served the city of Avalon for 20 years, and I'd love to have as many people there as possible. It's going to be at Buffalo Nickel at 5:00 PM.
Thank you, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council, Matt Baker, Finance Director. Finance has been working hard on preparing for our financial audit. At the next meeting, I'll have a more update on our fiscal '23 numbers. Other than that, we have some new members on my team. So we're doing a lot of training, getting everyone up to speed. So that's what's going on in Finance right now.
Great.
Well, yay, glad you got some help.
Yeah.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. David Hart, Community Service. Currently, right now, if you go up by Joe Machado Field, you'll see the concrete is done on that upper slab. Jordal did a wonderful job, so I want to give them a big shout-out. We're just buttoning it up right now, putting some speed rails in to make sure people don't fall off, and putting some bark in and doing a little painting up there. So hopefully, by the end of the week, we'll have the bleachers back in there as well, and it'll be set up and ready to go for the football season. Also, we are doing some repairs at the skate park. We're getting rid of the half-pipe that's in there right now. It's long overdue for that half-pipe. And so we actually purchased a new one that will be going in. It's a little bit smaller, but it'll be brand-new and much stronger. And we'll be also fixing some of the faces on there. We'll be adding lights to the skate park to hopefully deter some of the vandalism that has been going on up at the skate park, and try to dial that in and try to keep that from happening, and keep it more of a positive place. Summer Fun is coming to an end in the next two weeks. This week, Movies on the Beach goes interactive with Lilo and Stitch. At 7:30, you can come in and start making your own lay for the movie. You'll also receive an interactive bag. You can get transported to Hawaii in our interactive photo booth. And we will have an opportunity to donate to what some people call the Pregnant Catalina Maui's Relief Fund. We'll have that at the snack bar via Venmo, so you can donate Venmo or cash towards their relief fund. This Sunday will be our last yoga on the beach, on Sunday morning at 8:00 AM. It's going to be taught by our local, Val Vega, and she will be doing a special edition of Mommy and Me Yoga. But everybody is welcome to come along and join the yoga session, child or no child, borrow a child. We'll see what we can do about getting other people's children there for you, if you like. Also, on the 21st, Monday, the 21st, next Monday, the Fishing Derby Kids, all the local Fishing Derby Kids. It's about 10 to 12 of our locals who go out there every week and compete. And we have some that just dominate the field. The Tuna Club will be giving them a tour of the tuna club, so they'll get invited in. They'll get a tour, they'll get to talk fishing with the members there. And then we will be having lunch prepared for them as well. And then I hear that we're partnered with the NFL, so the kids will get authentic jerseys to go along, and without it costing any more. It's $35 per person. First evaluation day will be Thursday on September 7th, with games starting on Saturday, 9:17. At the same time, we are having volleyball. It's the first time we are doing a volleyball league. It's actually going to be taught by the high school coach. So we'll actually have excellent instruction for our kids that will move forward into the high school. Be on September 10th, Sunday, September 10th, and games being September 17th on Sundays. Last but not least, on Park... We'll be giving away stuff like scooters and tablets and a couple of things for the kids. And then we have Megan Wright, who is providing hot dogs and food from Catalina Charlie. 300 backpacks with school supplies in there. So if you have a child, or if you are a child and you're going back to school, come on by and get yourself your school supplies. That will be August 29th from 1:00 to 3:00 PM over at Avalon Kids Park. Is there any questions?
No, that's awesome.
Thank you.
Just one. I've heard of some monetary fundraisers for Lahaina. Do you know if anybody's doing goods, you know, like blankets, clothing, toys? Is anybody in town organizing something like that?
I was going to mention in my comments, but you know, now it's August 29th. It's, oh, sorry, August 30th, 3:00 to 8:00 PM at the Catholic Church. And it's going to be also like a kermes, so they'll be selling food and...
Okay, good. What time was that again?
3:00 to 8:00 PM.
3:00 to 8:00, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I have an update regarding the community income survey. It will be published on Monday, August 21st. Physical mailers will be going out that same week, announcing the opening of the survey. It'll be available in English and Spanish. And there'll be a self-addressed envelope with each letter going out. So it'll go out to all of our post office boxes in the city. In addition, there will be an online survey option for those that don't want to do that physical survey, or maybe there's more than one family that lives in a residence. They can always go online and complete the survey. And then Xylo International, the company that the city contracted with to complete the survey, they'll be here the week of September 11th, so September 11th through the 15th. They'll have a team of four workers going door-to-door with the survey, making sure we get as many responses as we can. Are there any questions on the survey coming up?
I think just to make sure that we post about it before these dates. So if, you know, there's knocking, they answer the door.
Yeah, for sure. And they're going to have staggered times to try and get people, you know, before or after work, or, you know, after the kids go to school and all that, so.
Is this already all printed, or has it been, is it still, is there still room for editing if necessary?
If you have any suggestions, yeah, let me know.
The only one that I had was just the italicized text that we were talking about. The italicized text is, that is on the Q1, if we can add that to Q2 as well.
Okay.
Only because I think that's something that people would prefer not to have publicly...
Sure.
...utilized if possible.
Let's say also question three. So 1 through 3.
Okay.
And then just the only other part that I would ask is that, I don't know if it makes sense to gather comment as well regarding this. I know these are primarily checkboxes and/or yes-or-no questions. But if there's a space online at least where you can add comment if you want to regarding any of the questions, that may be beneficial for us to be able to refer to later on.
Okay, yeah, I'll see if we can add that to the online survey.
Otherwise, it's great, thank you.
I mean, do you really think this is going to, I mean, I know you looked into that and who you work with, that it covers all the kind of funding agencies that we deal with, so we don't have a surprise that, whoops, we forgot to ask how many dogs you have, or, you know. I mean, you think we pretty well got it covered?
Yeah, so a lot of these questions are standardized through CDBG, which is a very, I guess, probably one of the more strict funding agencies in what they require as far as an income survey. And then some of the other questions that we added, like related to, you know, internet service, electrification of vehicles, some of those other programs that we might be looking into, we added those questions, so.
Do we care in any realm whether they have insurance, Medicare, no coverage at all? Is that something that might be helpful somewhere down the line? I don't know. I don't know.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, it's good information. It was really challenging to try and get it to a short, you know, we don't want it to take longer than like 5 to 10 minutes for people to complete.
I mean, that might be also helpful for the hospital and clinic.
They do their own...
Sorry?
Yeah.
Because I think that's also tracked with taxes, at least for who has or doesn't have coverage, and how that's tracked for, when you're filing taxes, it's part of the question for...
When your what?
When you're filing taxes. The requirement for insurance in California and the country now, I believe, is...
Right.
But how do we have that?
Yeah, that's a personal, you don't see people's taxes. So I agree, Annie, I think it would be good to know, because that kind of helps, that gives another face to the city, you know? So if there's a lot of people that don't have coverage, then you'll see that, you know, it's not a bunch of rich people live here.
If it's possible.
Okay, I'll for sure look into it. And I know that the hospital also had a survey out recently. I don't know if that's still open, but I'll definitely...
But that survey is just done, you know, did it go to everybody's houses?
Yeah, while they send it out to everybody and hoping that they get a response, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll double-check them.
But it's a health assessment survey that they do.
Oh, okay. Well, good. And the speed in which you've done this is very good as well. I know you've been working on it. Any other questions of Jocelyn, or any other things to report, Jocelyn?
Just one more thing. Later this week, we narrowed down the Public Works Director applicants to two. So we'll be doing another round of interviews with those two, and they'll be on island. So we're super excited for that.
Excellent, great, thank you.
Don't cry, Bob. No crying.
He's not leaving us. He's going to be here one way or the other. We don't know how yet, but... City Manager Report?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. I know we have a full agenda tonight, so I'll try to move my items through pretty quickly. And I'll address the legislation that I'm speaking on at that time. So just, I just want to give a shout-out to Assemblymember Lowenthal. Over the last month, last week, he pushed through, supported AB 705 for us, which in the grand scheme of things with his job is not a big deal, but to us, it's a big deal. This extended and basically duplicated the state law to City of Avalon law regarding the length of autoettes. We had this gap which created a situation where we had vehicles on the island that potentially would not be able to get inflated by the state without this. So it was very important to us. He took this through. This is one of the first things he got through. It was signed last week. We appreciate that very much. And also, I don't know that we publicly recognized here, I do want to mention Senate Bill 102, that he also championed, and that's to get $2 million for the City of Avalon for Mole Phase 2. That's the final grant amount. If we don't get any more, puts us in a position that this is a go. We're a funded project on that, and we really appreciate how quick, very much. Finally, I just want to say, today I had a meeting with the new Conservancy CEO, Whitney Latour. She came here, she's on island now. She is, I know we'll be reaching out to Council to schedule meetings if she hasn't already. She's trying to meet with everybody. I know how difficult that can be. But she's had a chance to meet with her today. Appreciate the conversation. I think I'm looking for a lot of good joint meetings coming forward with her. And we're going to try to get her at a council meeting here also, so she can address the public from the podium. And that's it until later.
City Attorney?
Nothing, I'll be talking enough on the two agenda items.
Councilmember reports?
I'll go first. But just talking about the whole situation in Lahaina, we were talking about it at work, and it just points out, if you haven't had a conversation with your family and figure out an escape route, you know, do the emergency preparedness, have a kit, have your important papers all in one place, you know? Because God forbid, if anything happens, just have it all in one place, and you could just run out the door, and everybody knows what they're going to do. So it's a good reminder, it's all in our face, and, you know, 2007 was a weird one, so we got lucky.
Yeah, exactly.
Also, Assemblymember Lowenthal, when I heard that the bill passed, you know, I reached out to congratulate him and started a little conversation with him. And out of that conversation, his office is helping to see if we can bring the Department of Social Services to the island, much like perhaps in a DMV situation. But DMV only comes twice a year, so I'm hoping for at least quarterly. If not, maybe they could use the courthouse and maybe do it the off weeks of court, so like every other week or something like that. But his office is working on it, trying to figure out if we can get that happening. I think that would be very beneficial to a lot of people in town. And other than that, just been really busy talking to a lot of community members. There's just a lot of passion going on. And my daughter, as you may or may not know, Susanna Sabat Gutierrez, has been spearheading all kinds of stuff. So our house has been like headquarters. But it's, I'm really, really encouraged and really happy that so many people are getting involved and voicing their opinion and wanting to get this all on the same page and be equitable for everyone. So, there we go, that's about it.
Just had a couple of broadband meetings, both with the Connectivity Group, and then also attended a meeting on the mainland with the Internet Action Team, which is a private set of donors that both may have services available for our city, completely free to assist with going after certain funding, which is phenomenal, but also looking down the road at what they want the space with regard to broadband and internet to look like. And so hoping to have more info to report back on that soon. But was invited by Jorge Morales, who will be here this weekend, I believe, with his wife, who's been a great help from Contract Cities previously and moving through all these other areas as well with us. So was thankful to attend that. And then attended Gateway Cities, got to welcome Hector de La Torre. Just a reminder again that Gateway Cities will be here the first Wednesday, Thursday of September, which is, I believe, the 5th and 6th. And so that's, hopefully, if everyone can make it, both a representative from the Gateway Cities plus their city manager and the supervisors' offices. So we'll be meeting, I believe it sounds like right now, either at the M or this Metropole Conference Room for those two days. But excited to welcome them into town and get to show them around a little bit. Some of them have never been here, some of them, it's been a couple decades since they've been here last, so. Yes, please, I hope that you can, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then just wanted to put the reminder out there with regards to fundraising for Lahaina, to just make sure that wherever you're putting your money, efforts, or donations to, that it's legitimate. Luckily, we've got a number of family members and friends in town who have put together those, whether it's Venmo or GoFundMe accounts. But just wanting people to watch out to not donate to links if they don't know the person or don't know the entity. And it's been, I don't know. I grew up babysitting a number of people that lived here, that now live in Lahaina and have lost everything except for themselves and their family. And so I'm thankful that they're okay. I know they'll be okay. I can't imagine what they're going through right now. But literally saw it happening, and that's my worst nightmare for this community. So thank you guys for doing what you're for it. It's to make sure that things like traffic control that they had, and I'm thankful that we luckily don't have events that size, because I can't imagine what we would do. But yeah, it was fun trying to figure out like, oh, that's how they do that, okay, cool. So they have some really fancy signage, by the way, if we ever want to get really fancy with signage.
I just wanted to add, I don't have dates yet, but the guys and myself are coming up with tips, like fire preparedness tips, what should you make copies of? What should you grab before you go? What can you do to home-harden your house to protect yourself if we can't get to it? When to leave? But we're coming up with some info that we will host a couple of meetings. It'll be English and Spanish. And we'll do one in the evening, and then maybe one on a Saturday morning. But that's coming soon, too.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Do you guys also have, I remember we got at one point, and I don't know if it was City Staff that were using it, there was an orange paper that people were utilizing to fill out, like, basic info for the members of your family that you could like keep on your fridge. So it was, in case of emergency, these are the medications they were on, these are the responses they would require, these are the care they would need. I don't know if that came from search and rescue, or City Fire, maybe?
That was one that we gave out, I think, for medications and stuff.
Yeah, it might be a good one to bring up again for people to have.
Yeah, we're trying to create it first, then we'll come out with the date.
Okay, cool.
And it'll be fireproof.
And it'll be fireproof, yeah.
I was actually meaning to add, and I've had it on my notes for a while now, but since we're on the topic, maybe a separate workshop for earthquakes? I know it's kind of just preparedness. I'll just go next. I think everything with the fires, it's just been kind of a touchy subject, just emotionally, and overwhelming, because one, it's so devastating, but two, because we've grown up with these individuals. So it was very scary to even think of what could have happened. So to know that they're okay and still smiling through it all is just so... I can't even find the word. I don't want to say that they have to be strong, because I don't want them to be if they can't. That's not something we need to ask of them. But to see them still smile, it's, you know, encouraging and just sending them all of the love. And I know they know, but just to remind them that they have this entire island behind them. And just ask away, and we're there, whatever they need. But within the same sense, I am holding a mental health and wellness event this weekend. We will be having it at the museum. And we have three speakers coming that are focusing on facilitating proper tools to build and support mentally healthy leaders. I think that's one of my biggest things, just mental health. It doesn't matter on what field you are, it's kind of just, if you're in a position with high stressors, because we already have to deal with life. And so then comes on the work that you and the load that you take on, even with helping our community, you know, I feel like we're impats and we take in that energy. So it can become hard to navigate. So I felt it was a need to bring these speakers over, kind of create a plan on how to, like a self-care plan and what to do next. So we'll be doing that this weekend.
Are you going to send something out at a little...
Yes, yes. We're doing like last-second details to make sure everything's set. But I should have something out by Wednesday, Thursday. Yeah, that would be it for me.
I have attended the Cal City's LA Division's Transition Dinner with the new president in Long Beach. Scott sat at my table with me, and he enjoyed ourselves. And then also, Avalon Rotary recognized Austin Henry as our Citizen of the Year this year for all of the things he has been involved with in the community. It was a delayed presenting him his plaque, just with things going on in the world that we had no control over, so we were finally able to give that to him last Wednesday. And then in regards to Rotary, the Saturday is the Stones Concert on Front Street, and Rotary will be manning the beer tent once again, the Beer Garden. So come on down and enjoy.
On Wednesday, I went to the Getty House. I was invited by Mayor Bass, Karen Bass, LA Mayor and Supervisor Janice Hahn. They took a handful, Janice supervises about 32 cities, 33 cities, so they're breaking them up, so this is kind of the coastal cities one. And the Getty House is absolutely incredible. It was kind of a homeless topic, but not really. So she talked a little bit about what they're doing, and then they asked us to go around the room, so everybody just kind of said what their problems were, what their situations were, like rolling hills of estates that, you know, the hills rolled off the estate. So, but it was nice, there were people that I didn't know, so that was wonderful. But Rex Richardson was there, the Long Beach Mayor, and he was talking about the 2028 Olympics. And he says that the City of Avalon, the City of Signal Hill, and Long Beach need to get together to see just what can happen. We've got four years. So more to come on that. And then... I'm in. Okay. And then I'm going scag, but on the phone on Thursday, this Thursday. I had an experience on the Front Street today, and brought to attention by my friends who sit at the beach. In front of Steve's Steakhouse, on the wall, there was this young man. And I was having lunch at the brew house, and they came in and they said, "This guy sells stuff on the Front Street." So I go out there and I say, "Hello, I'm the mayor, and you're not supposed to sell stuff on the Front Street." And they said, "I'm not." And he had those speakers, and then he had snorkels, you know, swimming gear. So I said, "You know, you're not supposed to..." "I'm not selling it." Well, then my friend said, "Well, no, that kid just paid $15 for his little speaker thing." So I went up to him and I said, "Well, I understand you're selling this, and you cannot do this. If you want to give all this stuff away, you can give it away." But anyway, and then somebody went up to him and said, you know, "Well, the mayor talked to him." He goes, "Well, I didn't see him." Well, so anyway, this little shit, pardon my expression, I don't know if he was on the cruise... if he was on the cruise ship or just what. But, and he was down there for quite a while, right? So I did not call code because I thought I handled it. Anyway, it just shows that we need more patrol on the front street of town because, and then I was taking, I was talking to e-bikes today and I was talking to bicycle riders today about get off, get off, get off. So we just need a little more help patrolling that front street. And that's all. Okay, we're all communication. I know we have a couple. This is when people from the community can talk on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes and no action will be taken.
Hello, everybody. Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Just wanted to promote a couple of quick programs. Don't want to take too much time. Coming up on the 24th at 4:00, we're going to have a visit from Barnesdale Arts, which is a highly acclaimed art school that works out of Barnesdale Hall on, in Hollywood. They're coming, I've wanted to get them out here for ages, finally managed to talk them into it. They're going to come on the 24th. And then in September, we're going to make mythological Greek masks with medusa and stuff all over it. It's going to be sort of, I've seen the pictures of what they've done at the previous libraries and other places. They're gorgeous. I really strongly want to advise people of all ages to come to this event. It's going to be really cool. They're a really cool art commune, Barnesdale Arts. Coming up the week after, August 30th, we got Marionettes. So Haynes Marionettes is coming back. I love having them here every year. They're going to do a show called Marionette Magic, and I'm going to give away free books. It's going to be lovely. So that's sort of a kind of back-to-school thing. I'm hoping CKV will come. That'll be awesome. Summer Discovery Program is winding up. Gave away quite a few books. I still have plenty. I think I'm going to save them for Halloween and give them away on Halloween when people come and say, trick or treat, I give them a book. That's a trick.
They're going to throw it back at you.
No, actually, the parents always go, oh, that's much better than candy. Very convincing. But yeah, I've still got a couple of really interesting, summer discovery kind of programs. We're going to make a mini biodome on Tuesday, August 22nd. It's like fill, we have got little things of dirt and some plastic cups and water and you seal it and it sort of self-perpetuates a, hopefully not a monster alien, but maybe a nice little plant. Going to continue our games club every Wednesday at 4:00. That's actually pretty popular. I've just got lots of board games. I bring them out. People love it, all ages, really. I have all sorts of people coming in. Chuck Liddell is continuing to do the history talks, which are really, really fun. Happy three minutes already.
Two minutes.
Two minutes. Okay, okay. Well, come to Chuck Liddell's talks on the 9th and the 23rd. That's fun. It's locals, you know, keep it sing with him. And then visitors who take notes and everybody has a great time. Yeah, that'll do for now. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, anybody, anybody else? Okay, we have a presentation. Love Catalina.
Matt's going to make sure the video loads. So while we wait for him to come out. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and community members. Tonight, it is my pleasure to bring you the second installment of our new quarterly council updates. This time, I've brought it in video form primarily. And we have incorporated, because the quarter that ended was June 30, our fiscal year end stats in this video for you to enjoy. When you are watching it, I hope you'll take note of the millions of dollars worth of PR that was attained in top publications and on top networks. Also called out is our attendance of travel industry events, the hosting of 13 influencers deriving $20 billion in reach, seasonal ads that delivered 55 million impressions, social media growth, successful email campaigns, and over 60 event days. One campaign alone has resulted already in $211,000 in visitor spending and that campaign continues out there for visitors. We also saw an increase in membership by 7% and visitation grew by 10% despite some miserable weather that we all remember. So with that, I'd like to reel the video.
Great.
It's been a big year for our little island. We shared more of our story, engaged with new audiences, and helped a lot of people find their way to our slice of paradise. So let's take a look back and celebrate what we accomplished together. On the PR side, our strategic use of over 20 different pitch angles received a lot of attention from well-respected travel media, including multi-page print features in San Diego and Coast to Coast Magazine. Broadcast features included NBC Los Angeles, KGET TV, a KTLA holiday segment, and CBS 2. And online features included highly respected publications like Condoness Traveler, Country Living, and Esquire. We put ourselves out into the world and attended prestigious travel events like the North American Travel Journalists Association Annual Conference, Cal Travels Legislative Day, and Sea Trade Global. All this talk made people want to come see the island for themselves. So we hosted 13 visits with influencers and athletes. In all, this resulted in combined to an audience of over 20 billion. Yeah, that's billion with a B. And the videos continued with our brand campaign. We produced new marketing content and holdout updates all year long with strategic seasonal messaging. Our new suite of banner ads, social posts, and video gave people a little taste of the island life. Our marketing efforts garnered us a staggering 55 million impressions, with our social campaigns generating a ton of engagement, over 215,000 clips. And it got reactions, 22,000 of them to be exact. Over 2,000 people shared our posts and hundreds joined in the conversation. In all, this led to us making a lot of new friends. We also made high-quality connections with various top-tier partners and increased brand visibility. And over 335,000 people heard the call of Catalina, thanks to our email campaign with Travel Zoo. That's way, way more than the daily average per site traffic. Epsilon's initial snapshot of their net economic impact campaign has already reported $211,000 in spending on the island. All this will catalyze a rise to the top of people's daydreams, as more than 1.2 million potential new visitors spend time on our site. Meanwhile, we kept things lively here on the island with over 60 event days this year. And to make sure future generations can join in the fun, we committed ourselves to conservation and promoted sustainability through the Here for Catalina program. We couldn't have done all this without our team of partners, and we're excited to share that Love Catalina Island membership grew by more than 7%. And all our marketing efforts led to a 10% increase in island visits. That's what it's all about. So thank you all for making this year so successful. Here's to keeping that momentum going.
Nicely done.
Thank you. So that video and a digital version of the annual report, which has already been delivered to all of you on council and all of our members, are available on lovecatalina.com. And I'll be back in the fall with our official annual report that includes our audited financials and the relationship to the ordinance that governs our funding, as I always do. And if there's any questions for me, I'm happy to take them.
No. Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much. I hope the community enjoys watching that as well.
Jim, just on a side note, that was five minutes. Good job.
Okay, now we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have minutes, approval of the minutes from August 1st, 2023 regular council meeting. Number two, approval total expenditures for July 24th, 2023 through August 4th, 2023 totaling $1,545,497.39. Findings to continue to hold remote teleconference virtual city council meetings pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Item four, adopt a resolution authorizing the application of grant funds to the California Division of Boating and Waterways Boating Infrastructure Grant and authorize the city manager or as does need to be authorized signature on the grant application. And finally, item five, authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the city's on-call engineering professional services agreement with Engineered Solution Group renewing the contract term for an additional two-year period effective January 1st, 2024, and increasing the contract at a maximum annual cumulative total for all services from $500,000 to $800,000 effective immediately.
Can I just ask a quick question? Why, why is there an extra $300,000 for ESG? Is it just, you know, because it's old and the contract stuff just costs more? Inflation?
Should we talk about this without pulling it or do we have to pull it? Just answer that question.
I can answer the question.
Okay. These are all ramping up the grant-funded projects, the major capital improvement projects that we have are ramping up right now. They're, this $300,000 will essentially all be covered by grant funds we already have. But those projects are ramping up right now, and that's why.
Okay, I had a feeling. Just curious. Thank you.
Thanks.
And just one other question, kind of two. So that says that they supervise. So when we've got guys actually doing the work out there, are they putting, are they putting supervisors on the ground? Or no, not really. Or that's us? That's like a Bob or somebody?
It's primarily Bob. But once we ramp up and have these projects active, I mean, Bob can address it. It's going to be much higher increase of visibility for ESG under staff.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, that's what I was reading, something about kind of supervising things. I wondered kind of what that meant. Okay, good. We're good.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
I'll move to approve items one through five.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye.
Item number six.
Item number six, under General Business, we're seeking a resolution amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of Avalon and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2295. I would like to, this changes two items in their current contract. And I've had negotiations, a number of negotiations with the leadership from the union. First of all, the bilingual pay for our firefighters is $25 a month. We'd like to increase that to $100 a month. I think even that number is low, but it's significantly higher than what we currently have. Their ability to speak Spanish is significant with the treatment and services they're providing. We are calling on our limited number of bilingual firefighters to interpret, even when they're not on, they're doing that. We'd like to make sure we compensate them for that. I think it's money well spent. The second issue is provision for temporary acting pay for a fire captain. As you know, we have three fire captains right now, one for each shift. If one of them takes time off, vacation, sick, otherwise, there's only two other individuals, then we can lean on to fill in. This would give the chief the ability to establish criteria for somebody to be an acting fire captain. By doing that, we have more options than just the other two captains. If the other, either one of the other two captains has to fill in, it's overtime and it's at captain's rate. This would give us a chance. Hopefully, it would not be a, an increase to the budget because we'd be filling in with a firefighter engineer and then backfilling with a firefighter rather than backfilling with a captain. So it gives the chief more flexibility to schedule, to make sure not only that we have somebody that serves as the acting captain, but it also gives those individuals a lot of hands-on training. Down the road, we will have, you know, promotions, we will have vacancies. It gives them the opportunity to serve in that role. So I certainly support both of those issues. I want to thank the union leadership for meeting with me and addressing these issues. And I think this is a fair resolution.
And it's, there's additional training for those folks as well as I was reading?
There is.
Okay. All right. Is there any questions?
The only question I have is if we can get over the next year, just an accounting of how many calls you're going on that are bilingual in nature that require them to be the bilingual firefighters to be called out. I personally would think that that number should actually be higher than $100 a month. But would like to see what those numbers are, just to justify that if we could. But otherwise, I don't know if you have to ask questions, but I'm happy to make the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
To adopt a resolution amending the memorandum of understanding between the City of Avalon and the International Association of Firefighters Local 2295 for the contract period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, call for the vote.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Lovell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schickling?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Ponce?
Aye.
Mayor Marshall?
Aye. Thank you. Item number seven.
Thank you. Item number seven is a transit rental license discussion. As you know, last meeting on August 1st, council passed a moratorium on TRLs. Thank you for that. In the meantime, since that date, we have been, I've been working with Sagecrest, I've been working with staff, we've been compiling all the different suggestions submitted. This is what we would like to do, kind of our schedule of how we'd like to approach this topic, that being essentially that we want to have the appropriate time to main, to look at the regulations as they address public safety and health of the community. We want to hold two, right now, we have two work sessions, stakeholder meetings. That should read Tuesday, August 22nd, and Wednesday, August, September, or August 30th instead of September. That was my mistake. I apologize for that. But we want to hold two stakeholder meetings. And then we're also trying to find a date to hold one on a weekend to accommodate people that have a difficult time getting here during the week. These meetings would really be to open it up to all the public, to address any issue, come to the podium. They would be hosted by city staff, planning department. We're not asking for the planning commission to hold this. We're not asking for council to hold this. We will, we're certainly inviting everybody, including those members. But we want to hear from the residents, give them an opportunity to provide their input. We'll take all that in. At the end of that, we are prepared to disperse a community survey. We're trying to steer clear of our current community survey that Jocelyn mentioned. So, you know, we expect that when that survey is completed, we'll run a community survey to try to capture, encapsulate what we learned from the stakeholder meetings and get that out and then compile all that information, hopefully bring it back to council and planning commission at that time with some narrowed-down initiatives to address the top concerns of the residents. We feel that this, you know, gives everybody the opportunity to be heard on multiple occasions. And I have no preconceived notion of how long those meetings will last. We'll keep them open until everybody that wants to speak speaks. And we'll take every suggestion in and kind of funnel those through. And then Sagecrest and I will go through them and we'll get all of those kind of categorized between, you know, what we declared is really public health issues or quality of life issues versus housing issues and separate those two so we can address that appropriately. So this is our plan. We certainly ask council's opinion on this. And we would, if council is okay, we would begin tomorrow morning and advertise and start promoting those meetings coming up next week.
I have a question. I'm sorry. The community survey is going to be done when?
We would anticipate that it would be done at the completion of the income survey that...
No, no.
Yes. This, this one, we don't want to have two surveys going.
No, when is the income survey going out?
It's going to go out in the first, oh, I'm sorry, August 21st.
Okay. And then this is, why don't, we have a 45-day moratorium plus, and people are busy. Why don't we hold this off until October or sometime like that, when it's a little more quiet? Because we have lots of time. And...
We don't have a lot of time. We have 45 days.
And we can extend it another 10 and a half months.
Only if we have something to show for it.
Well, I know. But if we do it in October, it's still not 45 days.
Yeah, and it would be. So the moratorium expires on September 15th. So that gives us till, the extension would be September 12th. So that means that 10 days before September 12th, which is looking at the calendar, is September 1st. September 1st, we have to produce a report as to where our efforts are as of that day. We also then publicize that. And then at the 12th of September, council has the option of extending it based upon the report and the fact that if you determine there needs to be more time, you can then extend it out until next year.
Okay. And who are we reporting to? This 45-day report, who's that going? This 45-day report, who's that going to?
That goes to the city council, staff prepares a report that goes to the city council to justify any extension of the...
So, if the city council is saying, don't start it until October, we're talking to ourselves, we've already got this done, I don't, and this is, they're right on the tail of each other, as much as you say they're not, they really are, I don't know what the hurry is, I think to have this in August, what's today, the 15th?
Certainly we can do later, though. The survey we can do later, after...
Survey we can do later, yes.
Well, we can do this...
But we just have to have something started to show that we're actually actively moving forward with the moratorium, what we're doing during the moratorium.
Well, starting is that we have, we're set, number one, we've set up dates, number two, we have questions. I just think that's really rushing, you're giving people a week, plus, I'm a little concerned about 5:00 because people don't get off work till 5:00, and I think we're going to have the same people coming, I'm just a little concerned that we're rushing it, and if we're making the determination that we're moving forward...
But we're legally-wise, we want to play by the rules, we want to do what, how things are set up. I don't want to rush it, but it gets us started moving towards that goal of fixing it.
Okay, okay, but why couldn't we say to ourselves, because that's who we're talking to?
But we're not, but if we get sued, we're not the ones that are going to say, well, no, that...
Well, first of all, there was nobody who's opposing this moratorium, number one, and number two, I think everybody would like us to have at least a year. So, at least we can say on September 22nd, we put it online, you know, we've done this, we've done that, and then, but still hold off, so now people have...
Mayor, if I could, I think the suggestion would be that if we hold these first two stakeholder meetings, okay, and we can adjust the time, I certainly have no problem with that and making it more convenient for people, we'd be in a position to report out at the beginning of September to council, here's what we're finding, we only received, five people showed up or eight people showed up, whatever it might be, we recommend to hold more stakeholder meetings and spread this out, we can come back with specific recommendations that we might need more time at the appropriate time, being the beginning of September.
And this is going to go online as well?
We will have it online and...
And then, in English and Spanish, and all by August 22nd?
If I could, in addition, if you have at least one hearing, there'll maybe some ideas that come out of that initial hearing, and then you can direct staff to study those, look at what other cities have done, provide more information, that then gives you the list of chores that staff has to do, which then justifies, you know... Extending.
Okay, okay, but as long as it's explained to you.
Can I ask, though, I mean, I know that we have all received tons of ideas and suggestions from community members already, so is staff putting that, are they counting those, or is that going to go outside of the stakeholder thing? Because as far as legal-wise goes, we have been doing something, we have started something, and we have a lot of input, and I know that Kate Rudden specifically has supplied different cities, and Leslie has as well, you know, I mean, there's been a lot of work by a lot of community members on this, and I'm just hoping that that doesn't get pushed under the rug.
Okay.
Okay, so it's all incorporated, but, so I think that solves our, you know, we do have that to show, I mean, they could just put it, staff can put it in a succinct thing, you know? And then, so if we want to push this out, we can, because I think that would, am I right, Scott, that would solve our legal 45-day thing?
Again, we just have to have a report that discusses, one, the efforts that you've undertaken to study this, and, two, a rationale for why you need additional time.
Okay.
And if that says that rationale is, again, it's 11, 11, I'm sorry, 10 and a half months, and then after that, you know, you have another year that you extend it, again, assuming you have a report that the details were done and you still need additional time.
And this is going to PO boxes?
The survey?
The survey? We plan on getting, pushing it out as thoroughly as possible.
But to PO boxes, so not...
To PO boxes and online.
Okay, so the people that own the homes on the mainland will not be getting this? If I own a home and I have a transient rental, I'm not going to be...
They can certainly come online and fill out a survey.
Okay, okay. The only other suggestion I have, and I don't know, just running it by you, is kind of an age breakdown, like 50, like certain age and then 55 and older, because I think maybe some of the opinions of some at an older age might be different than some at a younger age, I don't know, just a thought. Not a whole bunch of age groups, but just like seniors, under seniors.
You mean us?
Not me.
I am.
Wait, um, okay, Sergeant at Arms, would you remove this man?
Could we make this survey...
You have to give him a warning before you do that.
Oh, do you, okay.
So, that's your one warning, Paul.
No, go ahead.
Would we be able to make this survey an option when people go onto our website to pay a fee or whatever sort, kind of make it a pop-up? You have a couple of minutes, this way to answer the questions?
Sure.
What is that?
So, if someone has to go online and pay something?
Oh.
Yeah, take two, three minutes to answer these questions, and that could be for the people that don't live here, that have to go on our website and pay something, that could be one of the ways. I did also have a question, are those dates correct?
No, it's August.
Okay.
It's August, yes, I'm sorry, I corrected it, yeah.
Okay.
So, it is August, and, you know, the idea of the survey is really to have that central clearinghouse where the city is pushing that survey out, we're getting that information back, we're collecting it, we can react accordingly, and I'm sure there's going to be some more information coming out of that survey, and we'll get those results to council.
Is it appropriate for the Saturday date to do that, even if it's after the 1st? Is that okay?
It very well might be, yeah.
Yeah. Again, you just have to have what efforts, you know, an explanation of the efforts, and even one meeting and getting information, for instance, if we provided the information that the public has provided through other meetings, and we mine that information and say, gosh, look at all these things that we need to do a research, you know, that's justification for why, you know, it takes, it takes a while. The whole purpose of the statute is to compel progress to be made and justify that you're actually doing it rather than just doing nothing. So, I've done about 20 of these, and so, we can help you get through this.
So, there's no watchdog looking over our shoulders on this thing at all, this is just crossing our Ts and dotting our Is in case, like Michael said, somebody for some reason wants to sue us for something?
We've been sued before on a moratorium, we've spent years in court, so...
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, so there's some wounds there.
But it also meant that we had to spend time defending it, so... And we did win at that point, eventually, but it cost a lot.
All right, well, let's cross the Ts and dot the Is.
Okay, if I'm a business owner, is that, I could be a business owner on the mainland and not a business owner here? Do we care?
In terms of the classification?
Do we care where we're a business owner?
As far as their input?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're taking, I think we're taking as much input varied as we can on this subject.
But if I'm a business owner, but I own a, so, but if I have a business over there, I might say, yeah, I'm a business owner, but does it matter if I'm a business owner over there or a business owner over here?
I mean, our goal is to target business owners on the island.
Okay, so, maybe...
Better impacted by this.
So, in the, because there's going to be an introduction and all that, okay.
Right.
Are you saying you want two separate labels for that?
Well, I don't want, yeah, I don't want to complicate it, but...
I think it would be appropriate to ask someone, one, if they're an Avalon-based business, and if they have a transient occupancy license permit. What happens is, though, is the California Apartment Association is the one that is monitoring all these and instituting litigation, that and reciprocal, they're the ones. So, the real, actually, the California Realtors Association, and BIA is looking at transient occupancy, California Apartment Association is looking at tenant rights.
Yeah, I was wondering, apartment, what would they care about TRLs?
And then, when you please rank the following list of topics by importance, it'll be 1 to 10 or 1 to whatever, and then they just write the number down?
Correct.
Like, 1 being the most important, and that kind of thing, we'll explain in the thing.
Right.
Okay. Yeah. You've done a lot of work and very, very quickly, very responsively, I'll tell you.
So, responses can come from far and wide, it's just, I mean, just, it's not just Avalon, I mean, because it's going to be online, so anybody can take the survey, right?
Anybody's going to be able to take the survey, I mean, we're certainly trying to, we're not going to track...
Where they're from?
Who's, but we're collecting that information, hopefully it'll give us a snapshot of what's important, and we can get the majority of our residents and business owners that are responding.
All right, all right. There's another survey out there.
Some of you are in the audience, I don't know if you were able to see this online, and you had any comments? Leslie, you're good? Okay, thanks.
And we anticipate that that survey, that's a draft draft of the survey questions, it's going to be lengthier, and it might, there might be follow-ups depending on feedback we get.
Yeah, yeah, no, this is a great, a big start.
I'm wondering if it's possible, also, just in review of both available staff time and/or volunteer time, if people would be willing to do a couple of shifts in front of Vons or at the post office, just with a couple of iPads to do the survey? If people, just for the sake of awareness and getting people to participate?
I'm willing to get out there.
Yeah, same.
Yeah. Because we need, we need, just like with the income survey, I'm still a little concerned about them walking around for four days, not knowing the territory with these income surveys, I think we need local, local assistance, but we'll see. Because, I mean, it reminds me of the census, and the census didn't go over very well.
Right.
We do plan on having local assistance with Xyla's staff.
Oh, okay, great, thank you, thank you, I didn't know about that, okay. Okay, we good?
Have you got enough direction?
I feel, I feel like we do, yes, thanks.
Yeah, just move on.
Comments?
Excellent, excellent. Oh, please, yeah, come on in.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley, I applaud you for what you're doing. I didn't speak at the public comment time because I felt this, what I wanted to share with you, I've already emailed to you, but I want the community to know these numbers as we prepare to come to these meetings and eventually fill out the survey. So, according to the June 2019 Planning Commission staff report, there were 339 short-term rentals at that time. Currently, we have 363 short-term rentals, more have been approved since Matt Baker's report in March, and we have four more on the PC agenda for tomorrow night. Assuming that they approve those, we will have then 28 new transient rental licenses in the last four years. This boils down to 24.3% of our residential units in town, and if we include those who have banked their CUPs, we are at 27.5% vacation rentals in town. I think our community needs to be very aware of that number. It also shows that we have a 7.6% increase just in four years in vacation rentals. So, for anyone to say that we have not increased our vacation rentals in the last 40 years, I beg to differ. And again, I just want you to take your time with this, do the research, and I appreciate all the work you're putting into it, and thank you for feeling so strongly about the future of Avalon. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other comments?
As I'm just learning about these surveys right now, I would like to suggest that if you're doing hard copies, bring someone down to the library.
Great.
I got a lot of people coming in and out, I can push them.
Great.
Just a thought.
No, it's great, thank you so much, yeah. Do you have anybody on the, on the...
No, ma'am.
Okay, then you got the direction, we're good to go?
Thank you.
Okay, and item number eight.
Yeah, item number eight is a presentation, it'll be a PowerPoint by Isaac Rosen, who's a member of our housing group at BBK, the purpose is to discuss what current state law is with respect to landlord/tenant rights, and then discuss what other cities have enacted in terms of regulatory enactments to either protect tenants, protect landlords, we'll go over those options, and then our goal of this is, after you've seen kind of a survey of what California law is and what other cities have done, is to provide direction to us, we will then come back with a, if you decide to give us direction, come back with a draft ordinance, where we'd be discussing that before the council, and then, you know, depending on how these discussions go, we can bring an ordinance for your adoption. So, that's kind of an overview of where we are, and I'll turn it over to Isaac again from our, he's one of our housing lawyers, this is what he does for a living.
Thank you, Scott, and just confirming, good evening, council, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Wonderful, okay, so, to Scott's point, that was a really nice summation of where we are and what we'll kind of be discussing tonight with council's consideration, next slide, please. So, as Scott mentioned, we're going to talk a little bit about, well, briefly just mention sort of our existing code provisions, and then I'm going to talk about the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, which is sort of a big change from the state in terms of setting floor, that is sort of a statewide standard for every jurisdiction within the state as it relates to tenant protections, and specifically, I'll talk about what's known as just cause termination. So, the law essentially says that a landlord can only evict a tenant if they are at fault or there's no fault in the termination, and that second requirement, that no-fault termination does require some relocation assistance, so I'll go into that briefly, it's similar information as was contained in the staff report, and then I'm also going to talk briefly about the Tenant Protection Act, which did have a rent control measure that was adopted by the state in 2019, that's in effect until 2030, and then, as Scott mentioned, potential next steps for the City of Avalon, so I'll be talking about some common through lines that we see in other jurisdictions in terms of equal or additional tenant protections that are offered elsewhere, and specifically, I have some sort of case study examples for the council's consideration. Next slide, please.
And I would just note that some of the cities that you'll see, we represent, we represent West Hollywood, we represent Malibu, we represent Palm Springs, and so we are familiar with these ordinances that you will be discussing, and then we also selected some other cities that have some very interesting concepts of these, kind of give you a big broad survey of them.
Absolutely, yes, it's something that our office is pretty well-versed in, in terms of helping clients with these sort of issues, and then, of course, tailoring it to the specific community. So, in our municipal code, we don't have local protections for renters in the sense that we don't have a rent control ordinance on the books, however, of course, the city is pro-housing in its local code, it does include rental inclusionary housing requirements, so, you know, when there's new residential construction in the city, that's five or more units, those developers are required to put 20% of those units towards low and moderate income folks, and deed restrict that property, and then we also have sort of unique provisions based on our community to ensure that hotels and motels and other sort of commercial development, new commercial development that comes to the city is also subject to requirements to ensure there's rental space available for a percentage of its peak season employees. So, the city definitely has some provisions on the books that reflect sort of protections for renters, however, it doesn't have local codified standards that build on the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, that's referenced here, that was a bill, AB 1482. One of the big things that Bill did that I mentioned sort of off the top was, it created what's known as just cause termination requirements. So, a landlord can only terminate a residential tenant if that tenant is at fault, that's an at-fault termination, or in certain instances, in what's known as a no-fault termination, where the eviction is due to circumstances that aren't a byproduct of sort of the tenant's behavior in the unit, and it's that second category, no-fault termination, where this law requires statewide that a landlord provide one month's rent to the tenant that's being evicted for a no-fault termination to go towards relocation benefits. So, there are some broad exemptions under the Tenant Protection Act. If there's affordable housing that's already deed restricted, that's not covered by these provisions, transient housing and transient rentals, things of that nature, don't take advantage of sort of these restrictions. of sort of these restrictions on terminations. And then units that are less than 15 years old, if those residential units receive their certificate of occupancy within the last 15 years, they are not subject to sort of the provisions of the act. And then condominiums are sort of within a separate California law, known as Costa-Hawkins, and so these provisions that we'll be talking about don't, don't apply to condominiums broadly. So I also mentioned a statewide rent control provision of the Tenant Protection Act. So, again, this is known as kind of like the floor, in that all state agencies have to abide by these provisions, unless it applies to the specific residential unit, but it doesn't mean that local agencies can't go above and beyond and do more protective provisions. So, the statewide floor for rent control that's in effect until 2030 says that a landlord can only do one rental increase in a 12-month period, or multiple increases so long as they do not exceed the maximum allowable rent increase. And that maximum rent increase is based on changes to the Consumer Price Index, so the most that rent can change from year to year for covered residential units is 5% plus the annual change year to year in the Consumer Price Index, but not more than a 10%, whichever is lower. Next slide, please.
So that just means that in the last year, when inflation has been very, very high, that landlords would have been able to increase it by about the 10%?
Yes, that's a, provisions, and you'll see this in some of the local cities that we'll talk about as sort of case studies, often do tie rent increases either to some percentage of the CPI increase, but often put sort of a maximum on that, in case there is a very dramatic year-to-year change, as Scott mentioned, as a result of inflation or something similar. So, when we're talking about no-fault termination, that is where a landlord is required to pay one month's rent as relocation assistance. In other instances where the tenant is at fault, the landlord still has to provide adequate notice, but there's no obligation to provide any money to the tenant that's vacating the unit. So, when we're talking about a no-fault termination in which there's an obligation to pay relocation benefits, that includes instances where, for instance, when the owner intends to occupy the unit that they may have been renting, when that unit is actually removed from the rental market, and those two are often one in the same, often, an owner may remove a unit from the rental market so that they or their family can live in that unit. There's also, under a no-fault termination, instances where there's an order issued by a government agency or by the court that necessitates vacating that residential real property. You could have a local ordinance that also requires that a, a unit be vacated, in which instance, that's a no-fault termination. And then finally, the Tenant Protection Act also says, if a landlord is doing a substantial remodel of the unit, and as a result, needs to evict the tenant, that's also a, what's known as a no-fault termination. So, I've included some language from the Civil Code, a substantial remodel that rises to the effect of actually resulting in an eviction of the tenant includes a replacement or substantial modification, and that's of any structural, electrical, plumbing, or mechanical system that requires a government permit, or the abatement of hazardous materials. A substantial remodel does not include, however, cosmetic improvements alone, so if the landlord is going to do a paint redo or do minor repairs or alterations, that's not sufficient to justify a eviction of the tenant and be within this no-fault termination. And then just, you know, the, the at-fault terminations are pretty self-explanatory, and this is where the landlord has no obligation under state law to make a relocation benefit. That includes if, if the tenant is in default of their rent or otherwise in material breach of their contract terms for the lease, it includes nuisances, so if someone was cultivating or selling controlled substances out of their units, things like that, or if there's otherwise criminal activity or unlawful subletting, those all constitute at-fault termination in which the landlord's not required to pay relocation assistance. Next slide, please. So, those relocation benefits, again, that the state sets a floor, so to speak, in that the landlord's required to provide the tenant, an eligible tenant, one month's rent at the tail end if they're being forced to vacate for a no-fault termination. The owner obviously has to provide adequate notice to the tenant in advance, and the tenant can either request a waiver of the final month's rent or actually seek that payment and, and stay current on their rent, and then use that for, for the actual act of relocating somewhere else. I've included a list of exemptions here, these are instances under the Tenant Protection Act where a landlord isn't subject to these just cause eviction restrictions, isn't subject to relocation requirements. I won't go through them all, some of them are relevant and worth noting, I, I would say specifically for our community, but these requirements and relocation benefits don't apply to sort of transient or other tourist hotel occupancies, so anywhere where the owner is charging a, a occupancy tax, those aren't covered by, by this bill. Housing accommodations that may be within nonprofit hospitals or extended care facilities, things of that nature, aren't subject to these requirements. Also, a big one that I think is worth mentioning, there are broad exemptions under other state housing laws, to say that single-family owner occupied residences or duplexes where the owner resides on one of the, one of the two units. Instances where the owner is actually on-site are exempt from these relocation requirements, even if that owner is renting to someone on the same property site. And that also includes, for instance, a junior accessory dwelling unit, so if someone was sharing the home but renting it out with the, with the owner whose principal place of residency is within the larger site, then those are exempt as well. Next slide, please. So back to the rent increase component of the law, as I mentioned, over a 12-month period until 2030, the state requirement is that a landlord not charge more than 5% plus the percentage change of the Consumer Price Index, or 10% of the rent, whichever is lower, and that sort of addresses the point Scott was raising regarding inflation or potentially big sort of seismic changes from year to year. The rent increase restrictions or the rent control provisions of the, of the act have a smaller set of exemptions than the eviction and relocation requirements, and those are listed here. Again, we're talking about single-family owner occupied residences, again, we're talking about housing that received their certificate of occupancy within the last 15 years, and then a couple other standard types of dwelling units where, in the legislature's view, it didn't make sense to impose sort of rent control more broadly. But I do think it's worth noting, this is, this is sort of the standard, and in most instances where tenants reside in multifamily dwelling units, where there are multiple units, whether they are large and small, in most instances, those tenants are going to be protected by the state standard on rent control. Next slide, please. So, as I've mentioned, the tenant, yes?
That's the existing law, that's what applies to our residents and our landlords, period. Before we go on to what other cities have done, do you have any questions about what existing law provides for protections and limitations? I think I'd like to just go over those before we kind of go into the, you know, what, what more can you do? Because again, this is the floor, this is what applies, and if you look at this, the one more interesting thing is, if a building is 15 years or, or younger, these don't apply. You don't have that, that many buildings in Avalon, most of your, most of your things are way older, but anyway. So I'd ask you just kind of, I think, before we pause into what the world of the possible, let's, if you have any questions about the world that is?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, so the state law covers the HUD and, like Tremont and Bird Park and Eucalyptus and senior housing, they're all protected by the state law as well?
Yes, all tenant housing, unless it's covered by one of the exemptions, is covered in state, covered in state, this is the default protections across.
So if a landlord is not abiding by that law, what do we do? How do we report it? Who do we report it to?
I would say the, yeah, the county of LA has quite a, quite a large number of resources regarding sort of perceived or alleged inconsistencies with state law. So, I would say for those local agencies that don't have their own rent control ordinances on the books, it, it would be more prudent to sort of work with, with the county on alleged violations. Of course, for those cities that do have their own standards in place, then there's quite a few additional tools at the city's disposal in terms of enforcement, both under administrative citations and working with the property owner directly, because at that time, it would be a violation of the city's municipal code. But I know the county of LA has quite a high number of resources for tenants, and I think just the education to the council and to the city organization can help residents feel comfortable if they do have concerns and ensuring between the city and our office that we direct them to the right place.
I'm going to give you two specific organizations. First is the Los Angeles County Department of Consumer Affairs, they have rent control counselors. And there's another group called, and this is just to help for compliance with the state law, it's StateHousedLA.org, StateHousedLA.org, and they're an organization for LA county residents where the state law, and they feel that they've been slighted and they can go to this website and get help.
So, real quick, I actually, I've been calling numbers all week and including those, and I also got ahold of LACTA. LACTA let me know, like, we just got one of these letters from Wendy Hernandez, and she was a good example, and I'm, I'm glad she let me know of her situation, because it looks like their rent was increased over 20%. So what I was able to get from those phone numbers were just really workshops, which is still great, you know, great information, but I think from LACTA, they let me know it's not a county issue, so that was worrisome. And another thing was that we were really just trying to find out if this is legal, because they're supposed to notify, what is it called? A rent modification notice. So I think at this point, everyone, because they're uncomfortable to sign their lease if it's over 20%. So, a workshop is great, but it's not going to do the job. So who do we contact if, if it's not a county issue? It literally says right here, it looks like it's not a county issue. So, and they said, "Good luck," so I was like, "Oh, thanks." So, to find out if the rent modification was done, who do we get ahold of? Or is that where we come in and create our ordinance that they have to do a rent modification notice?
Yeah, I mean, I would, I would say it's unfortunate to have that response from the county, because they have more tools at their disposal, and the county has their own adopted standards, but, that being said, I think to the last point you made, there is more enforcement opportunities for the city on a local level, it, to have something codified. Not that state law doesn't apply to those people that are negatively impacted or, or where the landlord's doing something that may be impermissible under the Tenant Protection Act of state law, but there provides more opportunity for, for Avalon to be more proactive and utilize more tools in the enforcement toolbox when it is a violation of local law.
There are a number of local agencies that, and public interest groups that can provide tenant help for, for advocacy groups, and so again, if that's captured correctly, we can have that list available for, you know, Avalon residents that call. But there, there are law firms and tenant groups that, that do that, so we can have that information.
But are there penalties for land, for landlords who are doing this?
Under state law, yes, I just don't know what they are.
But, but if there's no mechanism to reel it in?
Well, that's, the law firms do that, the tenant rights law firms do that.
And you know who else we call Supervisor Janison?
Well, that's kind of how I got the numbers.
Huh?
That's how I got the numbers.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Then there's the Fair Housing Foundation in Long Beach.
Did, I seen exemption though that said that condominiums are exempt? Was that in that list of protections?
I saw that.
Yes, there are certain limitations and certain exemptions associated with condominiums because of the ownership interest for the condo owner, although, of course, sometimes there are condos that are rented or subleased from the owner of the condo to a renter. But that's sort of why there's relocation exceptions that exclude condominiums and some townhouses.
But that's just pertaining to relocation, not to the 10% cap, correct?
Correct, correct, yep, yep. And the other item I wanted to flag, just in talking about remedies, is tenants are empowered under the state law to bring sort of civil actions themselves to try to recover the cost differential if someone's sort of violating the provisions of the Tenant Protection Act with pretty small penalties, it looks like penalties of $500, and some punitive damages. So there is a mechanism for tenants to bring against people that are violating the Tenant Protection Act, but to the point, I know we've been discussing, there's less opportunity for the city's direct engagement, because it's not a codified municipal code requirement or restriction.
One of my concerns is, all of these individuals that are getting their rent raised are working two to three jobs, so when would they even find the time to advocate for themselves?
Yeah, it's a good question, I mean, I, I think it's, yeah. Absolutely, I mean, I think it's true that often these state laws fly under the radar and, and aren't super easy to decipher for an individual tenant. And so I think, you know, from the state's perspective, it's a move in the right direction, but it also allows local agencies the flexibility to come in and draft more protective provisions for tenants to seek to address or mitigate some of the concerns that may be present for, for individual tenants that sort of otherwise have just sort of the time and resources necessary to sort of take up the, the cause with a violation of state law.
And I, I would think that because, again, it's a broad state law thing, but it's difficult to pursue, that's why, one of the reasons why many of these cities who stand with this have adopted local mobility, because it's much easier for frankly, as a citizen or a resident to go to their city hall and talk with someone than there is to go over town or reach out to a, you know, a law firm.
So since we're preparing a tenant landlord ordinance, is that something we can add on that, asking for them to show the proper amount of notice days, to show us a rent modification notice, is that something we can add?
Yes, I mean, some, some cities have tenant boards where their tenants feel that they've been aggrieved by their rent increases, evictions or whatever, they can then go to that board that is the city creating the board and have that, that board as the authority. So, again, if it's at your direction, yes, we can create, I think West Hollywood has that. Again, there's, there's a whole cafeteria of options that, that you can choose, and you tell us what you want, we'll make certain, you know, that's legal, and then we can present it to you for consideration.
I guess for this situation that we have in the letter, they weren't given the proper notice either, so who would we direct them to, to make sure that the landlords, I guess, fixes this issue?
Right now?
Yeah, before we do an ordinance. Like, what resources are we giving them?
We can, I can get those names of the law firms that specifically are tenants rights law firms. That's what their, their avenue.
Well, if it's a state law, can't we just, isn't there someone you could just say, you know, this guy is, because he's lying to his tenants, the, the tenants are saying, "You're not doing this," and they go, "Oh, no, that doesn't apply to us." Right, right. So, you know, I just don't know who, who's the watchdog over these state laws.
That's my question, who is the watchdog?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know that we have a, a good answer in the sense of sort of a private dispute without sort of local codified standard. in the sense of sort of a private dispute without sort of local codified standards. I would, I would like to think that there would be opportunities to reach out to the state agencies and to the Attorney General. But obviously, to one of the council members' points, these are significant investments of time and energy for a landlord that may not be acting in the best interest of their tenants and under state law. So I think it is a challenge, just like any sort of state standard that's sort of given on high because the city generally wouldn't be directly engaged unless they had their own provisions adopted at a local level and have more enforcement tools. So I think to Scott's point, before a local ordinance is in place, I think it's providing resources either to contact the state or potentially, you know, law firms and tenant advocacy groups that work on behalf of these type of issues. I know in Long Beach, which is one of the cities we'll be discussing about briefly tonight, the city ended up adopting an urgency ordinance with respect to the no-fault provision associated with substantial remodels a result of tenant rights activists that had sort of come and spoke to the city council in petition for a local ordinance to ensure there weren't unintended consequences associated with areas of the state law that may be pretty broad or don't address the immediate needs of tenants in the community.
So I'm wondering, we have Jack Sweeney and David Kree that kind of represent a lot of locals. And what if somebody like that just wrote them a letter and say, this is the law, you're in violation of the law? Would that stop them?
But would that be pro bono or would they have to charge?
Well, I guess it's worth the phone calls. Maybe it's, maybe like that, it seems like you could create a standard letter. And every time it happens, and then Jack just signs it and goes, it's not a big, so it's not a big deal. It's not a $500 deal. It's just a, you know, I mean, maybe. I mean, I don't know any other attorneys or anybody that else would scare. Maybe if Matt signed the, signed the letter because, or, I'm kind of joking, Matt, but you sign the letter, like, hey, you're in violation of the law.
So I went to the state attorney general's website, state law. And what they do is they refer you to, it says, find a legal aid office near you. But you can visit, and it's called www.lawhelpca.org. The attorney general is saying, we're not going to, on their website, permission. Like, they're saying, we're not going to do this. Here's, here's a group that you can do. Or they say, contact, go to the state bar and find someone for attorney, attorney or the California courts for self-help resources. So again, the state is saying, not much. So again, that's why many of these cities is that we need to step up.
And once we get our ordinance together, then we're the enforcement.
Yes, you would, I would advise that you do what other cities have done, which is if you want to, if you want to be the enforcer, you create a board for that so that council meetings don't become, you know, planning tenant rights appeals. We have a dedicated board. Again, as most cities have done, is created an independent rent control board, rent stability.
Okay. You want to give us some examples now?
Absolutely, sure. So I think the discussion, the robust discussion is pretty good and hopefully will be illuminating in terms of sort of high level what some of these other cities listed on here have done to the extent the council's interested in crafting its own ordinance. And just to reiterate, so the legislature built into both the rent control component of the Tenant Protection Act and also the ability with respect to relocation to say that, you know, those restrictions on landlords are not meant to limit the authority of local governments that want to establish their own policy, so long as they're more protective than what's offered at the state level. And so these are the cities we're going to just kind of briefly go through. Next slide, please. I would say also just included here is kind of like common through lines, things we've seen in a number of other jurisdictions that have crafted their own protection, tenant protection ordinances. So one in other jurisdictions is to narrow what constitutes a no-fault termination. So again, no-fault termination is where the city is required or the landlord is required to pay relocation benefits. But it's also the full list of instances where someone can be evicted for sort of just cause based on no fault. So there are instances where jurisdictions, and Long Beach is my next slide, but jurisdictions that have eliminated the substantial remodel basis for no-fault just cause or added, like Long Beach did, added additional relocation requirements if a landlord was to remove a tenant under a no-fault termination because they were planning to substantially remodel the unit. We've seen instances where local governments have expanded tenant protections to include other types of dwelling units. We talked about the fact that the state standard says any building that has a certificate of occupancy issued within the last 15 years is exempt from many of those requirements. So local governments have expanded tenant protections to reduce that number in terms of new construction and bring additional units into the fold. Probably the most common thing that local agencies have done is increase the amount of relocation assistance. So instead of the one month that's required under the state law, some cities charge three or four months worth of rent so that if a landlord intends to evict a tenant, there's a disincentive in terms of the amount of relocation assistance due. And on the flip side, it helps that tenant who, through no fault of their own, if it's a no-fault termination, is required to find a new dwelling unit. And then local agencies, a number of them have imposed rent control that's much more expansive than what's in the state law. And finally, a number of cities have imposed rental boards to hear evidence and consider rent control issues. I would say another common component of this is that in the other cities that have utilized sort of more protective local ordinances, there's still been sort of a safety valve in that it retains, these local ordinances often retain the right of the landlord to evict a tenant based on at-fault termination. So, you know, if the tenant is, again, causing sort of material damage or breaching their lease or significantly behind on rent, often even with additional protections associated with no-fault termination or with rent control or expanded relocation assistance, there's still a control, a control that allows at-fault terminations to proceed. And another item that's at the bottom of this bullet point is a local agency is also empowered, of course, to limit their additional protections to certain types of multifamily dwellings with a minimum or maximum number of units if that is a community-specific way to think about sort of what populations of renters may be vulnerable to eviction or relocation concern. So there is quite a big plethora of options available to the city. Next slide, please. So I mentioned Long Beach earlier when we were talking about sort of the enforcement component and local tenants' rights groups because it was in 2021 that council in Long Beach first adopted an urgency ordinance and they temporarily instituted a moratorium and removed the ability of a landlord to issue an eviction for a no-fault termination that was based on a substantial remodel. And as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, in part, there were local tenants' rights groups that spoke to city council and expressed their concern that there would be unintended consequences that would lead to displaced tenants due to remodeling work or rehabilitation activities, where in fact, the actual displacement of the tenant may not be necessary. So as a result, Long Beach adopted an urgency ordinance and a temporary moratorium. And then when they revised their own local rent controls, one of the items that was permanently codified was the idea that there'd be higher relocation assistance provided for no-fault terminations that were based on this idea of a substantial remodel. So a tenant could receive upwards of $4,500 or two months of their rent in effect when they were issued the notice to terminate based on substantial remodel. So Long Beach is an interesting example in terms of addressing sort of various city-specific concerns, first by adopting an urgency ordinance and moratorium, and then coming back with sort of a larger set of revisions, including higher relocation benefits based on a specific concern of the community. Next slide, please.
Isaac, I just have a question. And that doesn't, that doesn't matter if, whether they are on a month-to-month or they have a year contract?
Yes, generally, well, so one component of the state law is that it applies, that floor that the state sets is based on a tenant who signs a year-long lease or more. So I do think local agencies, however, have the ability, and certainly some local agencies do craft restrictions separate and apart from rent controls that say, you know, there is a minimum amount of time on a residential lease. And so I don't think there's any issue with a local agency either setting a minimum amount of time on a residential lease, full stop, or crafting rent control measures that could apply to tenants that had leases that were shorter than year-to-year or things of that nature, depending on, you know, the population and the extent to which there are shorter-term leases.
Yeah, because I believe we probably have a lot of people that are on a month-to-month. And, yeah.
Or no, or no lease.
I mean, yeah, that I mean, just month-to-month and nothing, yeah.
Right, but I mean verbal. I don't have a paper lease.
And to that point, there is reference, I'm forgetting which city it is, but I know one of these cities, one of these case studies our office looked at, you know, has made reference to that idea that, you know, just because you don't have a written lease would be more applicable to an at-fault termination where someone's, you know, not complying with the terms of their written lease. There are, and I have seen language in other jurisdictions that talk about leases, you know, that are in effect whether they be written or oral leases because that's a reality of some renters. So I did want to, I did want to flag that it may come up in one of these case study cities. But that is something that, you know, can be regulated, even if it's not a written executed lease. So Culver City is a good example only because they've done quite a bit of different work as it relates to tenant protections. So I wanted to flag firstly that there's sort of rent control provisions which are interesting. So if you remember, we talked about rent control under state law that says it's either 5% with the annual increase to the CPI on top of that, but not more than 10%. What Culver City did was they reduced the scope and the amount that can be charged from year-to-year on rent quite a bit. So if the change in the consumer price index from year-to-year is less than 2%, then the rent increase is applicable to the city's residential units cannot exceed 2%. And if the CPI change from year-to-year is greater than 5%, the maximum rent increase that's permitted citywide is 5%. So I imagine part of what went into that is what we've talked about in terms of if there's kind of wacky changes year-to-year in terms of inflation or other sort of, you know, the pandemic or things of that nature. So Culver City essentially has limited rent increases in the city between 2% or less than 2% and at most, in any given year, 5%. In Culver City, they do include their own set of exemptions in terms of what's not subject to their local rent controls. That would be instances where state or federal law expressly exempt the unit from rent controls. One that pops up quite a bit, and I've mentioned in the context of the federal law, units that were certified for occupancy after a certain date. In Culver City, that date was February 1st, 1995. So units certified for occupancy after that date are not subject to these rent controls. Units that can be separately owned, like single-family homes, townhouses, condos, units part of a subdivision are all exempt from these Culver City requirements. And their rent control ordinance makes clear that in that city, and this is fairly common in local ordinances, that once a tenant voluntarily vacates, that's a just cause eviction and rates can be reestablished at that time by the local agency. So essentially, it removes the requirement or restriction on the rent stabilization or the rent control at the time there's a voluntary termination by the tenant. Next slide, please.
Can I ask the exemptions for that one? Were those determined by the city or were those based off of previous law that had to be upheld?
Yeah, I would say it's likely a combination of both. I think there are some best practices in there that the city likely looked at in terms of sort of what made sense for the state legislature in terms of instances where there was existing forms of price control or rent stabilization in terms of units that may already be subject to affordable housing restrictions or instances where the units could be separately owned, like the owners of a single-family home, for instance. So I think you do see some overlap, but also, you know, the exemptions, particularly with the occupancy date, are obviously things that are community-specific. And a city, again, can be more protective than the state law. So it's possible they have less exemptions that may apply. But my best guess would be it was probably a combination of instances where it makes sense from state law and federal law and then other instances where there were specific exemptions or carve-outs based on the community of renters in Culver City.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so on to tenant protection. So Culver City also offers a much higher amount of relocation payments than what's required under state law. So in course, no-fault termination, it's three times the monthly rent or three times the market rate of the unit plus $1,000 with some limited exceptions. So relocation assistance is not required if the landlord gave the tenant advanced notice when they moved in, for instance, that the idea was to ultimately demolish that unit at a specific point in time or to convert the unit to a condominium or something similar. So there are some limited exceptions to these relocation requirements. But generally, you're seeing a much higher obligation to the tenant before they can be removed in Culver City in terms of the relocation payment that's due. And then Culver City also had a carve-out for, quote unquote, "small landlords." So those are landlords that maybe only have a couple units, three units or less, either within the city or in the, in the area. And they are subject to only 50% of that relocation assistance that would otherwise be due. And so to go back to the question on the last slide about the carve-outs and exceptions, you can see that here in terms of Culver City being more protective in reducing the scope of the ability for a landlord to terminate a lease based on a no-fault termination. So this is a more limited set of exceptions that allow the landlord to evict a tenant when there's no fault involved. And so in Culver City, that includes the, you know, the demolition of the unit, similar to state law, if the unit's removed from the rental market. And again, similar to state law, if the landlord or their family intend to occupy the property. But they also have to attest that they intend to continue to occupy that property for at least three years. So an owner doesn't say, yes, you know, this is, our family's going to utilize this, this unit. And then there's no follow-through. So there's an attempt to try to ensure that the unit would stay occupied by the owner for at least three years if there was going to be a no-fault termination. And then some of these other no-fault terminations similarly are overlapping with state law in terms of, to the extent there may be existing deed or restrictions on the property or there's an order from the government or the courts that necessitates a vacancy. Culver City also has an interesting carve-out, again, that's much more protective than the state law. There are some categories of tenants that are full stop, protected from eviction. So those that are elderly or disabled or terminally ill. So those that are elderly or disabled or terminally ill, low-income tenants, tenants with school-aged children, there are a whole host of Culver City-specific instances where irrespective of the ability to terminate based on no fault, the city still restricts the landlord's ability to evict certain categories of tenants. Next slide, please. The other piece I wanted to just cover for Culver, which I think is pertinent to the discussion amongst the council to date, is they, you know, they take a very proactive stance with enforcement. Obviously, a part of that is because the municipal code provisions are so expansive and specific to the city, but part of the way they track that is through a rent registry. So there's an obligation that per unit, the landlords are going to pay a fee to ensure the city's rent registry stays up to date to the extent there's a change in ownership that needs to be filed with the city. And there's a penalty associated with failing to comply with the rent registry. And I can only assume that is in part to ensure that the city does have those enforcement tools to track its city-specific tenant protections. Culver City allows, from a due process standpoint, landlords can petition the city. So if they feel that the application of city's rent control ordinances is unjust or subjects them to, I should say prohibits them from receiving, quote, "fair and reasonable return" on their property investment, they're allowed to file an action with the city. And that is something that comes up amongst a number of these cities in which there's some opportunity for landlords to petition the city, to have a hearing to contest sort of the applicability of some of these regulations. And then on the flip side, cities may have a rent control board or something similar so that tenants can file an action if they feel like their landlord has violated the local rent ordinance. And then we talked about tools in the enforcement toolbox. In Culver City, the city can issue administrative citations, bring civil, and bring civil actions against offending property owners. Next slide, please.
I'm curious, I'm sorry, Isaac, on those petitions?
Yeah.
Is that rather arbitrary? I mean, is there more to it than just that one statement?
Yes, I mean, I would say it is, it is, however, subjective because it allows landlords the opportunity to make a broad argument based on their, you know, the specifics of their owned property, that they're, you know, if they were to follow these rent control provisions, they will not receive a fair and reasonable return on their property investment. So it is a subjective standard, certainly, but some cities, and I know West Hollywood is like this, you know, sets a series of factors that the hearing officer or whomever at the city hears those petitions considers. So, you know, the full cost, the net, the net amount of money that's being brought in from the tenants versus capital improvement projects to the building or other operating or maintenance expenses. So there are factors that sometimes are codified by a local agency, but it is absolutely sort of a subjective right to petition based on the facts and circumstances specific to the owner's property.
If I could just also note that in the moratorium that we did, that we got sued on and we won, we had a provision like that for hardship, that if this was bad and the landlord was going to, or the person was going to lose money, they could apply for an exemption. The next circuit loved that, said that really helps in validating, keeping your ordinance from a constitutional challenge. So we would advise that anywhere that you're going to do, you're going to have to have some provision for a protection so that someone doesn't waste business. But again, we would advise that because, again, that's what the next circuit is expecting like that.
Yep, so I think everything Scott just mentioned is a good consideration in terms of having sort of a local process and having the ability to sort of petition on some of these requirements, which is not dissimilar to really any of our, or many of our local standards and certainly on projects that come through for discretionary approvals. So Pasadena, I included here just because it's another instance of a city that included heightened relocation benefits. So tenants that were in good standing, meaning they were not subject to be terminated based on sort of breaches that the tenant created with respect to the lease, so long as they were at 140% of the median income in the community, received quite a significant relocation benefit. The relocation benefit for that evicted tenant is two and a half months fair market rents, and that's determined by HUD based on rental units of a similar size that are in comparable communities. So beyond just the rent that might have been charged to the tenant, Pasadena has a more expansive relocation that's based on just what is a comparable rent, market rate rent for that, for that unit regardless of sort of what the tenant paid. They also have, you can see here just the moving expenses. So in addition to the relocation allowance, and this changes annually, but there's a moving expense allowance of $1,449 for adult households. You can see that amount is quite a bit higher if households are being evicted for a no-fault termination, where those households includes dependents or disabled folks or members, seniors. And then additionally, Pasadena has this requirement that for tenants that have been in the unit more than 10 years and are being evicted for just cause no fault, they can receive up to 20%, I'm sorry, up to 200% of the otherwise applicable relocation benefits based on how many years beyond 10 they resided in that household. And again, to kind of hit on sort of how local agencies are either expanding the scope of the state law or limiting the exceptions from the state law, relocation is triggered in Pasadena if there's demolition. Again, this one comes up quite a bit. If an owner is going to remove the unit from the rental market or occupy it themselves, the government order to vacate the unit, change of ownership, this one is city-specific. If there's a change of ownership and that's going to result in a rent increase to the tenant that exceeds the annual CPI increase plus 5% in any given year, there are relocation requirements triggered. So the idea is if a tenant can no longer afford to live in a unit where the prices are jacked up significantly, it's going to trigger relocation under Pasadena's local ordinance. And then Pasadena also has an interesting provision that talks about temporary relocation. So if a landlord has to have a, has a viable reason, a credible reason that a tenant may have to vacate the unit for several months, that tenant, I'm sorry, that landlord is obligated under Pasadena's code to provide a daily prorata rent amount to the tenant plus moving and storage fees. So there's also a disincentive based on that temporary relocation requirement for a landlord to temporarily evict a tenant because they'll be subject to a prorata rent amount, and you can see here that's doubled, when they have to do that. So there's a disincentive for tenants to temporarily have, for tenants to temporarily be vacated from their units.
So let me, I'm sorry.
Yep, go ahead.
So let's say I'm going to have a lot of work done to the place, I'm going to get them out of there for 120 days, but it costs me a heck of a lot of money to do the remodel. When they come back, I can still only do the CPI increase of 5%, correct?
Yeah, yep. If the local code puts a restriction on the rent increase, even if there's substantial modifications that are permissible and there's a temporary relocation, then yes, I think that's a good point. If the local code says you're restricted in the amount you can charge or rent, even if there were substantial modifications, that rent control restriction would control, absent sort of anything in the local ordinance that says otherwise. Next slide, please. Okay, so I'm going to try to move quick Palm Springs and West Hollywood and just hit the highlights. Palm Springs is interesting because they had ballot measures approved by their residents way back in 1980 and 1990. So there are some units in the city of Palm Springs that are subject to very limited rent control, I'm sorry, very limited rent increases. From year-to-year, the maximum rent increase for those units that were in effect and eligible at the time the voters approved this ballot measure, it's limited to 75% of the increase in the CPI for the city of Los Angeles over a 12-month period. So we're talking about units that were built and resided in before that ballot measure passed as being subject to those requirements. And additionally, the voters went back to the ballot box in 1990 and expanded those restrictions. So although Palm Springs has a voter-approved initiative that's codified now with pretty high or pretty limited rent increases allowed, the city also adopted its own rent stabilization ordinance that says for those units that aren't otherwise subject to the approved ballot measures, you see a similar rent increase restriction as what's within state law. So the rent increase will not exceed 10% or 5% plus the change in the CPI over a 12-month period. And similar to some of the other items we've been talking about in other jurisdictions, the Palm Springs ordinance does include sort of a fair return petition that the landlord can file demonstrating sort of why they think, subjectively based on the cost of their investment, they should not be subject to the rent control increases. Next slide, please. And so now we're getting to how that is enforced, which I think is pertinent to the discussion tonight. So in Palm Springs, for a landlord that's going to file one of those petitions or for a tenant that's concerned that their, you know, their landlord's in violation of the local ordinance, the city council appoints a five-member rent review commission. And the residents of the city, they cannot be landlords or tenants of rental units that are subject to that voter-approved rent control ordinance, but those are sort of the only restrictions on who serves. And the rent review commission considers those tenant requests, those landlord requests for otherwise opine on interpretation of the city's rent control measures, alleged violations by landlords, things of that nature, nature hardship adjustments that I was just talking about from the landlords. So it's not uncommon to see rent commissions or rent control boards in larger cities because generally those are going to be Brown Act bodies. And so for some large cities like Palm Springs, and, next slide, please, and West Hollywood, which I'm going to talk about briefly, they have actually Brown Act bodies that hear these complaints or promulgate administrations related to rent control. So West Hollywood's rent stabilization ordinance is fairly complicated and it's kind of difficult to discern because there's so many different triggers. It's those that moved in before 1979, and then there's another category of tenants between '96 and '98, I should say '98, not 2018, that are subject to general adjustments. But I think the most important thing is for anyone, for any tenant that is subject to rent stabilization after January 1st, 1999, they are subject to a maximum allowable rent increase that's based on an amount determined by the rent control commission. And here, just as a point of reference, the total rent increase last year for those most recent tenants that are protected under the RSO, the rent stabilization ordinance, was 2.5%. And to a point that was brought up earlier about notice, West Hollywood does have a provision in its municipal code that requires either 30- or 60-day notice from the landlord to the tenant if they are increasing rent subject to the city's rent control ordinance. So in addition to putting local controls on the amount of rent that may be increased, West Hollywood has an express requirement within its municipal code that requires landlords to use approved forms to inform the tenant and represent to the tenant that they are consistent with the city's local ordinance and intend to raise the rent by an amount that's permissible under that ordinance. Next slide, please. And this is my last kind of substantive slide in our last kind of case study in West Hollywood. But West Hollywood is unique in that even for units that are carved out or exempted from the city's rent stabilization ordinance, nearly all residential units in the city are protected. And there are very limited reasons why a tenant could be evicted by their landlord for just cause. So this is an instance, again, where the city has whittled down the instances where regardless of if there was falter of a tenant, there are only a handful of instances where the tenant can be removed by the landlord. And those are listed here, again, many of these are going to look at the Tenant Protection Act under state law, but also some of the cities we've talked about tonight, so you have non-payment of rent, substantial violation of lease terms, nuisance, illegal uses, the refusal to provide access to landlords, or unlawfully subleasing the unit, things of that nature, owner's intent to live in the unit. And there's even a further carve-out on that, which is even if you have a just cause grounds by which the landlord can evict the tenant, there's built-in provision that says there's a comparable unit in the building that's already vacant and available. And then finally, just another point on the rates, rent stabilization commission, similar to Palm Springs, they both have Brown Act bodies that are empowered to promulgate their own regulations, publish the actual increases in West Hollywood that are permissible under the code, they can verify eligibility for tenants and landlords subject to these provisions, and they also hold hearings on rent adjustment applications. And similar to those other cities, there's a carve-out whereby the landlord's petition, the commission for a rent adjustment, when they're seeking a just and reasonable return. Next and final slide, please. So we've moved to questions. I did want to note something that Scott and I talked about earlier, which just for the council's consideration. There is a case out of New York State where a set of landlords have challenged the city of New York's rent control provisions. New York has some of the most stringent rent control provisions in the country. The landlords are making an argument that it's a physical taking of their rental property to require such a limited grant to tenants. So New York similarly has a number of sort of no-fault terminations that are allowed. It's a pretty short list. And so landlords have argued in court that that's a physical taking of their property because it's forcing them to continue the lease with existing tenants and it's their private property. That argument from the landlords was rejected by the federal district court and the second court of appeal, but they have filed a petition with knowing whether or not the Supreme Court may take up broadly some of these issues associated with rent control. But our firm is monitoring the development of those cases and more broadly, just the scope of some of what we've talked to tonight in terms of what other agencies are doing with respect to rent, the extent the council is interested in doing something similar. And that's all for me.
And there are a bunch of cities that, and there are a bunch of cities that don't do anything.
Correct. Yep, there's a whole host of cities that are subject to that floor of state law obligations, which as we've kind of discussed and just deliberated, you know, there's a fair amount of carve-outs with that state law. And for instance, the rent control provisions are only in effect till 2030. Absolutely, there are a number of cities that are only subject to the state law and don't have their own rent control ordinance.
So now it's your time to discuss, and you can give us direction, we can bring sample ordinances from some of these cities to you. We have a We can bring sample ordinances from some of these cities to you to have a further study session. Again, to what we'd like to...
I have a suggestion that you give us everything that he's got there so we can really look at it and go, oh, I kinda like this one, and see where we have some commonality. Because that's way too much information.
So we can provide you the PowerPoints that I did. And if you want, we can also make available the ordinances, the underlying ordinances, if you also want those.
Well, I think that's a good start, because else we'll have a scrap on the paper.
We'll prepare that information. We can distribute that to council well-quiet for the next meeting. And then you let us, again, if you'd like to schedule a further study session on this, we can do that now, or you can wait till you've digested this material and let us know.
Let's digest. But the other thing is, and then there's the discussion, do we wanna do anything at all? That still is an option, right? And then my question is about the commission. If you do a commission, we are a little town, but if you do a commission, do you put landlords and tenants on it? Or do you put, because they were talking about...
You could do that if you want. And then one city said, you can only be on the commission if you're not a landlord and tenant. So only if you're exempt from this. So that would mean, you know, someone...
Homeowners and...
Well, I mean, that would be, that would skew the...
Yeah, true, yeah.
Who is on that board if you say no tenants.
Right, right. You gotta have that balance. And I'm sure, yeah, and this will be a lot, if we decide to move forward, there'll be a lot of discussion.
Right.
And this isn't urgent, other than trying to take care of the people that are contacting you, Yessenya, that have the problems, you know?
Well, I mean, I think it's pretty urgent. Like, we are already in, like, housing crisis. And now we're dealing with high rent, so it goes hand in hand. So we do definitely need to act on it as soon as possible.
Oh, and but my question would be to Matt. Matt, do you have to issue, are you, do you, does your department issue eviction notices?
Yes.
And how many have you issued in the last year since you've been here?
Two hundred and ten.
Yeah. Let me check. Okay. And do they go to, and then they go to the mainland, so we really don't know what happens? They go to the mainland after that, to court?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, it's not, it's not done here. Okay, okay. All righty.
But I agree with Yessenya that this is a very important issue because of the scarcity of housing. And my landlord has told me to my face, if you don't like it, move.
Exactly. I know, yeah. I mean, yes, but it's gonna take some time to get some community feedback and all.
Right, right. And we, yeah, and we need to have community feedback.
I'll get this material to you by the end of this week, if not tomorrow. And we will, as a time, we can get all these ordinances. And we've already looked at these ordinance anyway. Give that to you as quickly as possible.
Yeah, okay.
For now, I did wanna get this number out. I just found it. It's a so-called Housing Rights Center. And it's 213-387-8400, extension 1111.
Okay, and then they'll put it on the website, put it on the city website.
Can we put it on the city website? Can we put any sort of resources on the city website for this?
We do, yes.
We, you know, we can, if you can get them, get them to Davenport, make sure I get them posted.
We'll make sure we also hear any public comment.
Do we have public comment?
And I did go to LA, LawHelp.ca.org, and it looks like it's got all kinds of great resources. And the Fair Housing one got terrible reviews. They were rude and all that, so anyway, I'm gonna recommend that.
Does it make sense to look at scheduling a study session in September for this? Are you guys, do you think that would be enough time to review stuff and do that?
Yeah, and then do a special study session.
When's our next meeting? September?
September.
September meetings are a little tight because of the, everybody going out, out of town at the conference on the second meeting, so we're already cramped on the 5th and the 12th right now.
Yeah.
We're out of town that following week.
May I suggest? No, the 29th? Oh, this one. Oh, yeah, that's right.
The 29th, there's a lot...
No, I was, I was like looking, I thought there were five Tuesdays, but I got the wrong month.
Is it 29th? There's a heck of a stuff going on.
Tuesdays are always one.
Isn't that in November?
We're not going there. That's in the numbers.
I think the biggest thing that is impressing upon me right now, besides the eviction protections, is the annual rent increases. And looking at even if lately the CPI seems to be relatively close to five, if not well above five because of inflation. Right, so if you look at that, a unit that started out at $2,500 this year would be increasing over five years to $4,400 a month with that 10% increase. The, I'd like to call it a joke, but it's not a joke, is that you're supposed to have, in terms of budgeting, the standard usually is 30% of your budget should be going to your rent, which that is not for anyone here. That doesn't add up for anybody here. So the fact that we're so separated from that, even getting close to that is part of what we need to address also.
Yeah, yes.
So if you want, we'll give the materials. And then looking at, because of the conferences and stuff like that, you and Dave and I, we're, we're gonna clear the agenda for October 3rd. And just have that agenda cleared. And the only, again, we knew it earlier, but we're looking at conferences coming. You let us know when you want it, and we'll, in general, we can have a special meeting.
I'm supposed to be out of town October 3rd, and I would really like to be here for this. So I don't find it...
Okay, so that doesn't work.
We'll find a date, we'll circulate some dates and get...
Sorry, guys.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I'm down with a special meeting if we need it.
Yeah, we need to, absolutely.
I know that I don't wanna overimpose on staff, though, which I know will be impacted already with the double meetings in September and being gone for part of September.
So now we're going to closed session.
Yes, we have one closed, one closed session. Conference with labor negotiators, city manager, and all the five employee organizations listed on the agenda.
city manager, and all the five employee organizations listed on the agenda.